I want to call and order the August 26, 2014 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. I want to welcome those folks who are here in the council chamber to the council chamber. I also want to welcome those individuals who might be watching us on Channel 10. Welcome those who might be listening to us on their computers or watching us on the computers or listening to us on the radio. This is your city government. We want your participation in whatever form it takes, so welcome all. I'm going to ask the clerk to take the roll call. The council members?
Herman?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Hanske?
Here.
Fitzgerald?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Peck?
Here.
Tower?
Here.
Present seven.
Okay, I'm going to ask everybody to rise for the invocation and pledge allegiance to be led by council member Herman.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its standers, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there's one public hearing tonight, and I will read this public hearing three times and then bring it back to the council. Resolution 14-376, approval of final resolution for special assessments for various water main extensions, contract number 14-08. Second reading, resolution 14-376, approval of final resolution for special assessments for various water main extensions, contract number 14-08. Third and final reading, resolution 14-376, approval of final resolution for special assessments for various water main extensions, contract number 14-08. Third and final reading, resolution 14-376, approval of final resolution for special assessments for various water main extensions, contract number 14-08. Anybody? One more chance to come forward? Seen no one coming forward. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Comments? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on resolution 14-376.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Hanske?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
carried seven.
Okay, that takes us to citizens' statements to the council. This is an opportunity when citizens can come up to the microphone, which is open at this particular point in time, make any comments they would like to about something going on in the city. If there's something positive you'd like to comment, we'd like to hear about that. If you've got a particular concern with something that's going on in the city, we'd also like to hear about that. So the microphone is open. Few rules with respect to it when you come up. We're going to watch your name, your address. Limit your comments to five minutes. Speak directly to the council. Don't discuss anything at this point that is on tonight's business agenda and no electioneering. You've got the mic.
Okay, my name is Lee Williams. Live at 331 Broad Street, and I'd like to know, I have, I ride the city buses quite often, and there is one route that travels on four of the city east side streets, and they are CP Street from Bowen to the river, Otter Street from Owen to Main Street, Washington Street from Bowen to Main Street, and Parkway from Bowen to Main Street. And I'd like to know when these roads are going to be fixed so that you're not filling potholes after potholes after potholes after potholes after potholes. I talked to the gentleman from the Public Works, the same, he says it's on the five-year agenda. But with the money that the city is spending right now on the city garage, who's to say those streets, being that they're on the east side, in the less populated areas or rundown areas of the city, don't get pushed off for another 10 years?
We don't have an answer for you at this point. Each year we go through the CIP.
I understand it. I was just wondering, where do you find a hard copy? Because I'm not a computer genius. I can't run a computer like some of the people in today's world.
Yeah, there's always copies of our capital improvement plan at the public library, so anytime the library's open, you can get a copy there.
I mean, is there any idea when these streets are going to be done? I mean, CP Street?
CP Street's in horrible shape.
CP Street, we'd be better off if they took bulldozers or graders down there and just tore up the blacktop and left it as a dirt road. I'm serious. And then my next question on this is, what is that doing to the city buses? I mean, I know we have some buses that are from 2003, which are 11 years old. That's definitely not, cannot be good for city buses that are, you know, virtually 10, 12 years old. And I believe, if my memory is correct, there are, I think, between eight and 10 of those buses that are being used on a six-day-a-week basis. So...
We hear the comments.
Yeah, we're actually going to be putting together a new version of the CIP, the 2015 to 2019, within the next few weeks. It's probably more, you're probably more interested in seeing the more updated version than the version that has been around...
When will that be out?
Pardon?
When will that be out?
That will be out within the next couple of weeks, so...
How long will it be before it gets to the library, though? I would imagine there's probably going to be a month or two.
Once it gets out, we'll be, we'll put the draft copy there as well, so you'll be able to see that.
Okay.
So we've heard your comments, so we appreciate your comments. Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward for citizen statements to the council? Seeing no one coming forward, I will move to the consent agenda items. The consent agenda items are items that the administration views as being non-controversial in nature. Thus, when we look at them, we tend to look at them as a package, and we'll put them up for approval as a package. And if there's a particular item that somebody would like removed from the consent agenda, they may ask. So if a citizen or a council member wants an item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration, we will do that. Okay, what I'm going to do now is I'm going to read through the items, and if there's a particular item that you'd like to speak to on the consent agenda, as I read it, I would ask that you come forward to the microphone and make your comments at that time that I, that I read a particular item. Okay, approval of bills presented by the finance director. Approval of cash report for June 2014. Receipt of claim filed with the city's insurance company, David Stube, for alleged damages to household items being broken from outside construction. Resolution 14-377, approve planned development for construction of an office retail building development at West Town Avenue and North Washburn Street. Resolution 14-378, approval of amendment for agreement for engineering services with AECOM Technical Services, Inc., for the design of the Snell Road sanitary sewer pump station in the amount $92,582. Resolution 14-379, approval of change order number four for Public Works contract number 12-03 with Advanced Construction, Inc., for Sawyer Creek channel improvements from Keller Road to Fox River. Resolution 14-380, grant a noise variance to Relco, oh, Relico, for storm sewer installation at the National Guard Armory Area Stormwater Detention Basin, contract number 14-03, for the week of September 8, 2014. Resolution 14-381, award bid for roof replacements for wastewater treatment plant lift stations to Vidmar Roofing, Inc. Resolution 14-382, award bid for boiler and pump replacements for City Hall Mechanical Building to B&amp;P Mechanical, Inc. Now, I'm going to go through a number of special events, but I won't say special event each time. Okay, resolution 14-383, UW Oshkosh Department of Residence Life to utilize streets for their move-in day for residence halls August 30, 31, and September 1, 2014. Resolution 14-384, Winnebago County Labor Council to utilize South Park for their Winnebago Labor Council citywide Labor Day picnic car show, September 1, 2014. Resolution 14-385, Amber Lake to utilize South Park for the benefit to raise drug awareness in memory of Deanna Lake, September 6, 2014. Resolution 14-386, Oshkosh Senior Center to utilize Senior Center parking lot, Riverwalk Trail, Wirewash Trail, and city streets for their Fall Family Fun Fest and Granny Smith Run Walk, September 7, 2014. Resolution 14-387, North Shore Neighborhood Association to utilize city streets for their North Shore Neighborhood 5K Run Walk, September 13, 2014. Resolution 14-388, Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 437, Oshkosh to utilize South Park for their POW MIA Ceremony, September 20, 2014. Resolution 14-389, His House Christian Fellowship to utilize Menominee Park for their His House United 5K, September 27, 2014. Resolution 14-390, Bella Medical Clinic to utilize city streets and South Park for their Bella Medical Clinic Walk for Life, 2014, October 4, 2014. Resolution 14-391, KZ Radio 92.9 and 104.3 and Kiss FM 95.9 to utilize Carl Steiger Park and Wisconsin Street Bridge for their bras across the Fox, October 17, 2014. Resolution 14-392, Oak Brook Church to utilize city street for their Babies for Heaven 5K Run Walk, October 18, 2014. Resolution 14-393, Oshkosh Rotary to utilize Opera House Square and city streets for their Oshkosh Chili Cook-Off, October 25, 2014. Resolution 14-394, approval of block party request, Wheatfield Way between Timothy Trail and Roush Field Drive, August 31, 2014. Resolution 14-395, approval of block party request, Walnut Street between New York Avenue and Short Avenue, September 20, 2014. Resolution 14-396, disallowance of claim by Tina Peck. Resolution 14-397, disallowance of claim by Michael Curtis. Resolution 14-398, approve combination Class B license, combination Class A license, special Class B licenses, operator licenses, and taxi cab driver license. One more chance to come forward. If anybody has a comment on any of these? Seeing no one come forward, I will bring it back to the council, see if they have any questions, comments, or want any items removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration.
Mr. Mayor? Staff is requesting, at the request of the applicant, that resolution 14-377 be pulled. They have some issues that they need to work out absent of us.
Which item?
Item number five, resolution 14-377. That's the planned development at West Town and North Washburn.
So they want it withdrawn? Any concerns about withdrawing that? Seen none. We'll consider it withdrawn. Remove it from the consent agenda. Any other questions, comments? Question removal of items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions to Mr. Godey. I'm concerned a little bit about resolution 14-378 and actually 14-379. Change orders. I still have an issue with change orders. I mean, I look at it as a consumer when I bid out a project from a business and they give me a bid and I sign it, that's it. I understand that occasionally we get, you know, projects that, as they get into them, things change and the cost changes or they have to do more, but we're getting, you know, we're 73.5% of our borrowed dollars. I'm concerned that, you know, we're constantly adding to these projects after we've approved the projects. And this is another one, and this one goes all the way back to 2012. So we've already borrowed the money, I believe, for this project. Now they're asking for more money. We going back to the bank to ask for some more money? It says, you know, in some of these, it says we're going to take it out of the stormwater utility. Then all of a sudden, the utility doesn't have any money and you need us to increase the rates. We can't keep doing that. We can't keep borrowing for projects that we've already approved. So if you can give us some indication to why council should continue to approve these change orders when they keep coming forward time and time again, the one is a fourth-time change order on a project. That's just bad business, in my opinion. So if you can give us a little help on a couple of those projects, I'd appreciate it.
I think both Mr. Godey and I can probably help with those. I'm going to work backward. I'm going to do number seven, which is the Sawyer Creek. You may recall that some concerns about contaminated soil were uncovered during the course of the project, and it took longer for us to finish that project, which resulted in a longer time where the soil was left at Bowman Park. And so we asked the contractor, when that was done, to restore Bowman Park, and after two years, the damage was more significant than what we had originally identified.
Wouldn't that be their responsibility, not ours?
No, that is totally our responsibility. That's no different than if you were getting something done with your house and you wanted something different done because something came uncovered. That's the responsibility of the owner, not the contractor. The contractor was contracted to do a specific scope of work, not just the end product, but a specific scope of work with certain understandings. And the scope of the work changed drastically when the soil issues were uncovered. The project, as you pointed out, was from 2012. It took us that long to finally get resolution to this. We just have recently gotten Bowman Park cleaned up, and the neighbors out there were pretty upset about the condition after two years of soil sitting there. It looked pretty ratty, and we needed to get that fixed up. So that's, that's at our option. With perspective number six, I'm probably going to defer to Mr. Godey a little bit, although we did talk about this last week. Snell Road, that pump station, we've identified a larger scope of work that we want to get analyzed. This is just the engineering portion of it. We've asked them to do a larger scope of work than what we originally contracted for. And typically, when Public Works looks at a contract, they provide, this is the scope of work we want, and we, they have an idea, Public Works has an idea of how many hours. We contract both for the scope of work as well as what we believe the hours to be. The scope of the work increased a great deal, and I think Mr. Godey can probably explain some of the details of it, but it also took more hours, significantly more than what we originally envisioned out there. This is addressing some sanitary sewer issues in the northwest quadrant of the city. We're relocating some sewer mains so that we can relieve the sewer along the Jackson Street quarter by pumping the sewage over Highway 41 and then back down south along Highway 45. Steve, if you want to maybe get into a little bit more of some of the reasons behind that?
When AECOM began the analysis of the pump station, they came back to us with the upflow, upstream flows of the prison, the high trash, garbage, and impacts on the pump station with recommendation of putting in a pre-screening ahead of the lift station. We reviewed that, agreed that that was something that would be certainly worth the city's investment to protect the pump station. That is a large portion of this change order was to add in based on their analysis of that once they were in the project. Again, that was beyond what we had originally scoped in the project. And there is an exceptional amount of high groundwater and a perched groundwater table out there that has become evident as we've gone through the preliminary testing on this. The DNR is going to require substantially more testing and permitting requirements than would normally be required in order to do high-capacity discharge wells in order to construct this. So we're getting the engineering work done at this point in time to avoid a significant construction change order once we get into the field.
Okay. Just one final question. Does any of this have anything to do with the fact that this pump station is surrounded by two landfills, and they're county landfills? Does any of that stuff flow into our water system at all? Or do they have them capped well enough that we won't have contamination from, from anything that the county landfills may cause the city?
Contamination is a concern out there, however, it's petroleum impacts from the service station that was east of the site.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
Mr. Rolloff, going back to your comments about Sawyer Creek, it says in our little notes here that the installation of, well, the significant changes to the project is installation of a drain tile system under the ball diamond to promote drainage. Was that an original concept in the beginnings of this plan? Or was this something added because of...
Once we decided to use the ball diamonds for the location of this extra soil, the ball diamonds were essentially taken out of commission for two years, and part of the agreement was that we would fix the ball diamonds when they were done. As we looked at the condition of the ball diamonds...
Who uses the ball diamonds?
That's used by the public. That's a public ball diamond?
So there's no fee income that we would recuperate any of this cost from?
Not a lot. The ball diamonds, you know, the ball associations work with us on these types of things, but typically we do the bigger issues.
So in the event of rain and there's water on the field, I don't think the general public is going to be out there playing baseball anyway, so why do we want to drain a ball diamond properly?
The ball di, I'd probably ask Mr. Maurer, but let me go back to, Public Works essentially used somebody's property to use, to leave the soil there. In this case, it happened to be a city department, and part of Mr. Maurer's due diligence as parks director is to say, in order for you to use that, taking it out of commission for two years where it's unavailable to the public, there are still people that, it's not just ball associations that use it, although nowadays it's more ball associations than it was in other days when it was a lot of pickup games. But in order for the field to properly work, draining it, when you put drain tiles in, it makes it a lot easier to drain. You can use it a lot quicker as opposed to waiting for Mother Nature to take care of it, and then it may not drain for days or weeks. So it's not unusual to put drain tile into ball fields to properly drain them. So that was the agreement that Mr. Maurer eventually came to with Public Works, which I supported because I knew that after two years of water on that field, it was watery soil from the dredgings of the, of the project, that it was going to need a good drain tile system in order to reestablish itself. And that was not in the scope of the work originally, so we're reimbursing the contractor for items that were not initially envisioned when we did this project.
You okay there?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Well, just related to Sawyer Creek, I mean, the issue was, we, there was contamination that was found, that we can't go back to the contaminator and recoup the costs of the damage that they did. So we had to extend the scope of the project to clean up the mess that somebody left behind at the same time addressing our stormwater problems. I mean, it's no different than any type of project that a company does. From time to time, you do find that I've got to make a change order. My scope, as it was indicated, has grown from what it originally was. You know, regarding the pump station, Mr. Godey indicated that it was some additional work done to save the city money in the future by putting this pre-screening treatment plant in, the pre-screening in. So you're kind of paying upfront to save a little money on the backside. So you have to, you have to look at it in the long range, look at the whole picture, not take anything as mutually exclusive.
Any further comments? Yeah, Ms. Hanske?
I just have a question on resolution 14-380, the noise variance request. Have we, well, if this goes through, how do you notify the residents? There is a little bit of residential area behind Keller there, and this would be the second week of school, so kids hopefully getting to bed a little bit earlier. Very important this time of year to get back into that routine. Are we going to notify anybody that this is happening?
I don't know if we're planning to notify. It's, the only area we're talking about is right in front of McDonald's on Menard Drive, and it's really because they, they only have one way in and one way out, so we couldn't just, a lot of businesses will, will do one entrance and not another, so they can go in and out. McDonald's has an exclusive in and an exclusive out. We believe that the noise variance means they can't have noise anywhere, but it's going to be out by Keller, same place where 41 traffic is very loud out there. They need a noise variance from us. We don't believe it'll be significant enough, but if you think there might be a precaution, we can certainly take one. I don't know if you were planning to notify residents?
Based on the location, we weren't planning to notify the residents at this point in time. Again, the work is closer to Keller Street than it is back near the residential area.
It's a common courtesy, that's all, especially this time of year. You don't want to disrupt kids' sleep habits.
Okay. Willa, thank you. Appreciate that feedback. We'll talk about it staff maybe tomorrow.
Any other comments? Okay, I look for a motion and a second on the consent agenda minus resolution 14-377.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on any of the items on the consent agenda under consideration? It's a consent agenda minus 14-377. Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on the consent agenda minus resolution 14-377.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Hanske?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay, there were no items removed from the consent agenda, so that takes us down to pending ordinances. I'll read, we'll go through each of these one at a time. If you have a comment on one of them after I do the reading, I'd appreciate it if you come up to the microphone and make your comment at a particular point in time. First one's ordinance 14-399, approved request to annex to the city, Boswitz Annexation. If I'd like to come forward, speak to that?
I'm surprised, but...
Seen no one come forward. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second on ordinance 14-399.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on ordinance 14-399.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Hanske?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Takes us to resolution 14-400, repeal and recreate a portion of stormwater management ordinance, section 14-1, definitions. Anybody like to come forward to speak to that? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second on ordinance 14-400.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion on ordinance 14-400? Mr. Cummings?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one question. Under the analysis, we're talking routine maintenance, exactly what are we?
We are clarifying the definition of routine maintenance so that it's clear that if a property or contractor removes the entire hard surface, being the asphalt pavement or concrete, down and exposes the aggregate or soil underneath, that is beyond maintenance, that is reconstruction. So it's essentially providing a clearer line as to where maintenance versus reconstruction is.
For example, when, when streets be done and sidewalks, they usually, you know, the terraces get torn out, and I've noticed that there's a lot of gravel and debris that goes back into the terraces before dirt is put back in for seating. Is this what we're talking about, that they have to repair it back to the way it was rather than leaving all that debris behind?
No, this is actually, this is clarifying that in a parking lot or driveway, that if you, for maintenance purposes, you can take off the top layer of asphalt, leave, if you have a three-inch asphalt pavement, you could take off the top two inches, leave the bottom inch, put two-inch mat over the top to repair the surface cracks, that would be maintenance. In the event that you would take it all the way down to the base course, so the aggregate underneath or the soil underneath, that is considered reconstruction. What happens at that point is, when you get to reconstruction, that triggers other stormwater management requirements versus maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Ask clerk to take the roll call vote on ordinance 14-400.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Hanske?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay, that takes us to new ordinances. New ordinances require two readings, and this will be the first reading on these three ordinances. I will read through these, and if you'd like to make a comment at the time I read the particular ordinance, please come forward to the microphone. There will also be an opportunity at the next meeting to make comments on these. It's at the next meeting that the council will take a vote, unless in one case, which we'll see tonight, on the second one, there's a request to waive the second reading. Okay, first one's ordinance 14-401, approve requests to attach to the city from the town of Algoma, Dishaw, Wallace voluntary attachment part of 2295 and 2291 Patriot Lane. Anybody like to come forward to comment on that? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the council if they have any comments at this Seen none, that'll take us to ordinance 14-402. amend section 2553A2 to include an exception for construction of a public sidewalk on the Washington Monument property that is not within the right-of-way of Menominee Drive. Anybody like to come forward to comment on that? I see no one coming forward. I'm going to bring it back to the council. There has been a request to waive the second reading. If anybody would like to make such a motion, they may.
I will move to waive the second reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second to waive the second reading. I'll take it back to the public. If any public, members of the public would like to comment on waviness, which, waive I'll take it back to the public if any public, members of the public would like to comment on waviness, which sent, waive the second reading, which means we'll consider it tonight for a vote if the waiver goes through. Seeing no one come forward, I will bring it back to the council for any discussion on a request to waive the second reading. Sir, what's the rationale on this? So people know?
Yeah, Mr. Burridge is going to come up, but basically, there's going to be a sidewalk going up to the monument, and literally, you'd have sidewalks within a few feet of one another. It'd be redundant, but I think Darren can, can explain it in greater detail.
Not much more detail than that. Basically, what you have is you have an existing sidewalk that's not in the, it's not in the greatest of shape, and we have the option to replace the sidewalk, that's going to be $10,000 or just, you know, you have, you have green space, because the budget, they actually $10,000, the budget will be eliminated, you can make a, you can make a choice.
The issue we're looking at now is the waiver of the second reading. Why waive the second reading? What's the need for the hurry up? That's, that's the issue under consideration.
Oh, because we want to start getting, because unfortunately, the cold season will be approaching us by the time, well, the cold season approaching us, we want to make sure that we're able to pour the sidewalk while we still can. So that's, if we, if we lessen the, if we get rid of the second reading, we can start planning for getting the, getting the sidewalk poured earlier.
Questions, comments, Mr. Burridge regarding the request for the waiver? Seeing no comments, I'll ask the city clerk to take a vote on the, on the motion to waive the second reading of ordinance 14-402.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Hanski?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Period seven.
Okay, we have the, that passed, so it means we'll come back and I'll look for a motion from the council for ordinance 14-402.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and approved. Any questions, or any further discussion, or any need for more information from, yeah, Mr. Herman?
Thank you. I just want to let those that might be out there listening, this was approved in the 2013 capital improvement program for the Great Neighborhood Project. So this is that little diamond area from around New York, right, isn't it? Inami Drive, New York, that area. So that, that monument is going to be refurbished, and it should be a nice centerpiece. Again, they're coming into Menominee Park from a couple of different directions. It was approved in the 2013 CIP budget. Thank you, Mayor.
Other questions, comments?
Miss May, we just added, it was also, you know, prior to that, approved by the Parks Advisory Board with, with some great exuberance from local residents that were very active and participating in the planning, design, and ultimately, the approval of this.
Okay. Further comments, questions? Okay, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on ordinance 14-402.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Hanski?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Period seven.
Okay, that takes us to ordinance 14-403. Again, this will be the first reading tonight. Approval of parking regulation changes on the east side of Nebraska Street between West Sixth Avenue and West Seventh Avenue. Anybody like to come forward to speak to that? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back and see if there are any questions or comments at this time by any council members. I see no one make comment at this point in time, so we will consider it for approval at the next council meeting, and it'll be another opportunity for any comments at that point in time. Okay, that takes us to new resolutions, and again, I'll be going through these one at a time after I read the resolution. If there's somebody here who would like to comment on a particular resolution, the microphone is open to you. Okay, Resolution 14-404, approve initial resolution for special assessments, cold-mix asphalt paving, various locations. Mr. Fox, you coming to speak to this? Okay. Seeing no one come forward then, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second on Resolution 14-404.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Mr. Herman?
Thank you. Mr. Godey, could you explain to those out in the audience and to the citizens that might be listening, what is our cold-mix asphalt paving program, and what do we hope to accomplish by doing this on some of the, these are all what we call second-tier or third-tier streets? I, I take it Hawk and Rugby and Adams, et cetera?
These would all be local streets, yes. The cold-mix program is essentially going in, doing limited prep, base preparation work, stripping off some of the existing asphalt, and placing a two-to-three-inch-thick flexible asphalt pavement over the top of that with the intent of providing a minimum of a five-year life to improve the surface. Most of these streets are rated one through three, so they're very poor streets in surface condition, give the residents a better ride until those streets can be programmed to be fully reconstructed in concrete in the future. We're generally seeing a life of 10 to 15 years out of these streets pretty easily.
And these are streets that you've determined the stormwater and the sanitary sewers are fine for another 10, 15 years or so?
We are still in the process of investigating to make sure all of those are done. If we do need to do a spot repair ahead of time, we would do a spot repair.
And then, when, if we do a spot repair where we assess the citizens for this cold-mix asphalt, do they get assessed for the sewer repairs too, or things like that? Or is that something the city picks up the cost?
If it is the sewer main, it would be a city cost. If we discover a lateral that is in poor condition, it would be to the residents.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? One comment I would make is, I think all the council members received memos from the city manager regarding some, concerned about some cost overruns possibly because of the harsh winter we had in, in Public Works, and there was a thought about how there might be some cost cutting done. So as I understand it, you can clarify this, the city manager, this is basically a scaled-back cold-mix program for this year in anticipation that we've overrun some other areas because of the fuel costs, not because of high fuel costs, but because of the amount of time people were out on streets this winter.
Yeah, it's, we're estimating it could be anywhere from $75,000 to $150,000 over on that line item. Public Works shoulders all the costs for general-funded departments for util, or for, for fuel, so they were looking at options, and I essentially appealed to the department saying, the gas benefits everybody, the fuel benefits everybody, the street program should not suffer. So I asked Public Works in a, in sort of a compromise mode, is, can you find some savings in yours? Ask departments to find savings, but we still need to do these programs, especially after as harsh winter as we had. These are areas where, the gentleman talked earlier about, about CP, that one needs to get done sooner than, than these streets. These streets, we need to put them on the back burner, but the, but they need some attention done to them. This will buy a minimum of five and more likely 10 to 15 years, so it'll be, it'll be a very good investment and buy some time for some of these streets to get put to the back of the list so we can get some of these more urgent ones done.
Yes, does relate to a question was raised earlier by the gentleman in the back on streets, we always have to measure that against the cost and the ability to do them, so we're not where we'd like to be in some areas in terms of moving forward as rapidly as possible, but we can only do what we can afford. Okay, any other comments on that? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on 14-404.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Hanski?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Period seven.
Okay, the next one's Resolution 14-405, approved conditional use permit for exceptions to provisions of the downtown overlay district standard modifications, 500 North Main Street, skis meet market, Plan Commission recommends, but approval of south facade, signed denial of dumpster enclosure. Okay, would anybody like to come forward to discuss this from the, they see no one come forward, just a couple of comments, Mr. Burridge, maybe you want to come up too. I think we're actually going to look at a motion to take something out of this, because I understand that there was no real discussion of the dumpster enclosure by the, by the Planning Commission, and they really would like them to work with you on the, on the dumpster part of the issue rather than have it denied at this point in time. So we may be looking for a different kind of motion here. So why don't you explain what's going on here?
What is, is, this kind of came in at the last minute as we're, as we're reviewing the plans for the, for the new development. One of the things came in was, there was, there's actually a kind of a misunderstanding here. Mr. Larson had thought that he needs to put the, there's existing dumpster, dumpsters on the site. He had thought that he needs to enclose those. They're not required to be enclosed because it's existing, it was an existing use on a site. So when he moved forward with the, with the enclosure to, to, with the proposal, he came, he came forward with the wood, with the wood proposal, that's, that is, is a prohibited enclosure material in the downtown overlay, so we recommended against it as part of the, as part of the conditional use process. The Plan Commission did discuss it, there was, there was a little bit of discussion on it, it's reflected in the minutes, there's only one statement in here at the end, at the end. What happened was, when one of the planners, when, when we did the, the staff report, if you, if you'll notice, we, we did recommend denial. The Plan Commission upheld that denial moving forward, because it should have been, it should have been separated out, and there should have been one, one for the, one for the signed variance, which we were approving, then we should have separated that out for the, for the denial. That wasn't done. So what happened, the Plan Commission, they sustained our recommendation to approve the signed variance and to deny the materials variance. So that's what, what's before, that's what's before you right now, and it, I do have a suggestion, if you, if you're wanting to give some type of variance, what we could do is add a condition to approval of dumpster enclosure, material variance subject to review and approval by the Department of Community Development. But what Mr. Larson can do is work with us for the course of the next year or so to kind of come up with something other than wood enclosure. There are other materials out there that could work with them on vinyl, there are things that actually look like brick types of fence, so that would give him time, he's not even required to enclose it at this point, but when he comes back, we could work with them on some other types of materials.
Okay, I just want to get a couple of things clear, because at one point, it said that they, they didn't really, the Planning Commission didn't recommend approval, but they really didn't, according to the minutes, as I read them, they really did not even discuss or take a specific vote on it. They really didn't deny it. They just didn't, looked like they didn't discuss it, and the chair asked that, rather than do that, there be a discussion with you about it, is that correct?
There was some of that too, because that, that was where there was some confusion that came in between when the request came in and, and the Plan Commission meeting, because it's not required, they're not required to enclose their dumpster, that created some confusion, because they're not required to enclose it. So then there was discussion whether we even needed to be entertaining a variance if you wanted, if you did want to move forward with putting up a dumpster enclosure.
Okay. If we remove verbiage from the recommend, from the resolution, all the verbiage having to do with the dumpster enclosure, that would accomplish what you want to accomplish, then you would work with that?
Yeah.
That accomplishes the same thing?
That would accomplish the same thing, correct.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Herman?
Mr. May, and I'd like to do a motion, make a motion to delete the reference to the denial of the dumpster enclosure.
Second.
Anything about the dumpster?
Right.
Because they really didn't deny it. Okay, any discussion? Anybody like to make comments on that, the audience? No one's making comments on it, no discussion. I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on eliminating from the resolution any mention of the dumpster enclosure.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Hanski?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Period seven.
Okay, so we're back to Resolution 14-405, for any, any comments about what's left in the resolution. Of the conditional use permit or the exception to be granted for the sign. Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-405, as amended.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Hanski?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Period seven.
Okay, it takes us to Resolution 14-406, approved neighborhood association recognition policy. Anybody like to come forward to discuss this?
Yes, Miss May, I do, I will. I do. My name's Gary Gray, age 15, West Lynnwood. Have a couple of questions and then a couple of comments. First of all, I, I realize that staff has been working with neighborhood groups in the past, but I was just wondering, is that a full-time position, or is it expected to be a budget, a new budget position in the future?
No staffing changes. These, the two staff planners are Ms. Williams and Mr. Crumminhour.
Okay. My, my comments all is that, in regards to the actual policy that's, was, was given to the council, I think basically it's, it's very good. However, I would suggest a couple of things. On page one, in regards to the information that is received to the, from, to, to the city of Boschwitz, it starts with name of the neighborhood, the boundaries, borders. What I would suggest is that also included is something obvious in my estimation, is the name of the organization. You know, the name of the organization could be something different than the name of the neighborhood. The other thing, or another thing is on page two, in regards to the bylaws. I would, would suggest that perhaps sometime in future, item D stating how, to whom the neighborhood association is open to, is, could be a little bit restated, because it's, it's a little bit confusing unless you read it very closely, very carefully, and very slowly. The new, new item I would suggest to put in the bylaws is how amendments can be made to the bylaws. To have bylaws is, is one thing, but if, if it doesn't have any, any provision to amend them, they may not be too variable in the future. The sentence back, the, the next sentence is, changes and amendments to any other before mentioned items should be provided to the staff, to city staff. That, that's fine, and it should be, I, I would suggest that perhaps there should be a timeline on there as opposed to getting those changes to, to the city as soon as possible within X number of days, as opposed to waiting until whenever. The other, other question I have is, I realize in the past that the council has approved the recognition of neighborhood associations, but I'm, I'm still on what this policy has in regards to that, because it seems to me like the staff can approve the recognition of neighborhood associations, and the staff just notifies the council, and I'm not sure if, if, if that's a good, good policy. The, another thing is, on page two, there's a list of various duties of the staff liaison. What I would suggest is perhaps, since we're working with a group called Neighborhood Works, that perhaps the, these staff people should be coordinating the, in the relationship between the city and Neighborhood Works to have all the development of new neighborhood associations focused on one location. I, I also would, would suggest that this recognition policy is also, in my estimation, a little bit confusing, because there's basically two types of recognitions. One is the initial recognition of a new organization getting recognized by a city, and there's continuous recognition of the, of, of organization over a period of time. And I'm not sure if there's a lot of policy in regards to how to stop recognizing, recognize groups. There's some things about not, not, not following the, the requirements, but I think that, that should be a little bit more detailed or spelled out. Also, I think in addition to keeping a, a list of contact people, that perhaps the city should keep a, a list of the officers of the neighborhood associations also. Also, I think it's very important to have pre-arch financial reports from these neighborhood org- organizations. Sometimes these organizations don't have a lot of money, but then some neighborhood associations can raise a lot of, of money. I'm not talking about city money, I'm talking about privately raised money by the residents of the neighborhood. I think fiscal responsibility for the neighborhood associations is very important, especially when these recognized neighborhood associations have the staff of approval of the city. And I would prefer not to have some unusual, but sometimes occurring event that would blow up in the face of the common council and would be a little bit embarrassing, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment on the policy? Seeing no other comments, I want to bring it back to the council. Resolution fourteen dash four zero six, approved neighborhood association recognition policy. I'll ask for a motion in a second.
No move.
Second.
Okay, comments, discussions? Mr. Fitzgerald.
Just a question for staff, and I, and I think some of Mr. Gray's suggestions are well noted. I, I, you know, he mentioned some of these things that I, I think in the back of my head are rather nascent, and then I, I think about the issue that was in front of us several months ago with the, the, among association in the community and how, even though that has no relation to city government, how some of those same issues could crop up within, you know, neighborhood association and how some of his suggestions I think might be able to remedy those or prevent those kinds of situations from happening. My, my question for staff is essentially related to getting a list of officers for the associations and requiring an annual financial report, even a simple one. Is, is that something that you believe would be a burden either on the associations or on the staff?
I don't think it would be. I think it'd be a reasonable thing.
In that respect, I also agree with the timeline to any changes or amendments.
Within five days.
Yeah.
But I wrote it as a note to myself.
Okay, so that will be added in.
If, if, with those amendments, I think that we're, we're thinking the same thing.
Yeah, I agree.
Other comments at this time?
Well, just off of that, I mean, if, if that's the case, then should we lay this over with some changes added to it so that we don't vote this in now and then things get added? How do we make corrections? Or do you want it so that they have it to work with and then they make suggestions and then bring it back? I mean, maybe, I mean, I'm sure you've met with some of the neighborhood associations and they've had some input on this, I would think. Knowing, knowing, it's Middle Village, I'm sure they had some input and I see the citizens are here from Menominee Park, so I, I'm sure they had some input. So if we are going to make some tweaks and changes, maybe, maybe as minor as they are, we should lay it over until they're in there so that we have a completed document.
I would like to see that.
We aren't coming back with, we need an amendment, then we need this.
I don't think there's any urgency that it needs to be acted on tonight.
Okay.
Let me just double check. Yeah.
You know, that way, you know, because we just got it too in a way. I mean, we got it with our council stuff. So, you know, we now hearing Mr. Gray's comments and, and maybe some other citizens that are out there now may want to contact us and maybe we'll have some more input on it. I'd, I'd like to make a motion to lay it over.
Until?
Uh, let's see.
Until they have a chance to review it or get comments?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I'd say, I'd, how about this, I'll lay it over till the September twenty-third council meeting?
Second.
Is that a reasonable?
Is that, I mean, is that reasonable? I mean, that gives you a month.
I want to see, I want to check the, the time.
You know, it's roughly a month. That way, if there's any more input from what the citizens that are here that are part of this, if they have any concerns or questions after hearing what one citizen said and a couple of council members saying that, some input, that way, you know, we have an all-inclusive policy going in place. To me, it obviously is going to probably be tweaked. It's a new policy, it's a new, new direction, and we don't want to make it cumbersome on our citizens because we want to make it as easy for them too and for our staff that's working with them so that, but it's, I think it's a good point. So I, I'll make a motion to lay this, um, resolution over until the September twenty-third council meeting.
Spansky.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Yeah, I think this is a good idea. The recognition policy is something I think we need. I think Mr. Gray did make a number of worthwhile comments. I think the need for, not only the timeline on the amendment, but how to amend it is, is important. So, Mr. Gray, still back there? Some more? You may want, Mr. Gray, it would probably be helpful for you to write your comments up and send them to the planning department. Send them the list. So if you would write your specific recommendations up on paper and get those submitted, I would appreciate it. If others would email or send them in, it's easier to email than just say, hey, I think we ought to change this. But I think there were a number of good suggestions, as was indicated by the council, so we'll expect to see that in about a month.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I need a one.
Now, is there, is there anyone from out here that would like to comment on us laying it over for a month? Any problem with that? Concerned about it? Seeing none, I'll ask, I'll bring it back to the council again for further discussion on the layover.
No issues.
Okay. Okay, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on laying over resolution fourteen dash four oh six to, what's the date? September twenty-third?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, you got the date, okay.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Period seven are laid over.
Okay. Good work by everybody. Resolution fourteen dash four oh seven, approved great neighborhoods capital improvement program funding in the amount of about one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And there is a distribution on that. Probably ought to read that.
It's identified in the resolution.
Four, five areas. Right, there are, there are five areas. I was just going to go back to the, pick up on that so people know what they are. It's sixty thousand dollars for Middle Village Urban Green Space and Community Garden, five thousand dollars for William Waters Plaza redesign planning, twenty-five thousand dollars for terraced trees for Partner Neighborhoods, twenty-five thousand dollars for historic district signs and markers, forty thousand dollars for Emmeline Cook beautification project. That totals one hundred and fifty-five thousand. There will be more money left over for later projects even with that. So I'll ask anybody who's here that would like to come forward to comment on, on that, on that funding for the capital improvement program funding, the amount of one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of the distribution.
Hi, my name is Andrea McCann. I am from six eighteen CP Avenue, and I'm here to represent the River East Neighborhood Association. I just wanted to tell you that if you have any questions, feel free to ask about our ideas for the designing and planning of the William Waters Plaza.
Okay. Thank you for your work, for your comments.
I do have.
Did you want to comment on that?
I, I do have one question, but was your group responsible for the planning at William Waters Plaza this year? It looks great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Kyle Clark, eighteen thirty-six Ohio Street. I just have a question for clarification in the copy that was provided to the members of the audience here. On section, under the last whereas, line two, William Waters Plaza redesign and planning, for the record, there is an extra zero located in that. The comma is in the place where it would be indicating five thousand dollars. However, if you go back from the decimal place, the, it is indicated that that line item would be fifty thousand dollars. So just as a point of clarification, is that, as it was read, it was supposed to be five thousand dollars, but I'm asking for clarification for the record, that that comma is supposed to be five thousand with a zero omitted rather than with the zero as written as fifty thousand.
Mr. Clark is correct, and thank you for your observation.
Take that as an editorial change. Thank you for your observance.
Can't take the council member out of the guy, I think.
Clarification.
I read that wrong too, so thank you.
The math was right. The total is right.
We're proven, we'll take care of that.
Hi, I'm Jerry Jackman. It's from six oh two Washington Avenue, and this is good news, actually. I live in that section where you're going to allocate some money for the streets and during the last two years, a number of, actually two years ago, a number of streets were done in that area, Bay Street, Shawno Avenue, School, and that was quite an improvement. And over the years, the last two foresters have, this is a little bit off the subject, but have improved that area because they allocated trees for Washington. Many years ago, when Washington was redone between Bowen and Broad Street, they, they had some, because there was a storm a little bit a few years before that, they, the June thirteenth or eleventh storm, they really had a lot of money for some grants or something. So then really, if you, if you look at that area of Washington between Bowen and Broad, it really enlivens the area, plus they put a lot of money for trees, so to speak, for Monroe as well. So it'd be nice to see Bay, School, and Shawno have trees. Right now, it's very bare and it looks a lot better than years ago. It was like the first individual mansion, it was rather run down, like Bay didn't have curb and gutter for years. It's a heck of a lot better now, but we'd like, we'd like trees for that area to spruce it up for that area. Thank you.
I see somebody taking notes back there, so.
I just wanted to comment that those three streets are going to get street cheese in conjunction with this funding approval if you pass it, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on the funding program?
Hi, I'm Ruth McGinley, fifteen sixteen Menominee Drive, and I'm here representing the Millers Bay Neighborhood Association. If you have any questions about the Emmeline Cook project, be happy to answer them. It's a, the project is very important to our neighborhood. We feel it will increase the appeal of our neighborhood, and we know that people often choose neighborhoods based on schools, so we appreciate your support for this project and be happy to answer any questions.
I do have one question for clarification. You worked with the school district on Emmeline Cook, correct?
We have.
It's a collaborative effort between your association, the city, and the school.
Right. We've had some great partners with this project, and they include the North Shore Neighborhood, the Emmeline Cook PTO, the Neighborhood Works Badgerland, the City Planning Division, and oh, the area, Oshkosh Area School District. How could I forget them? That's the great partners, and we appreciate all of their support and especially yours and the planning division. Elizabeth and Ben have been fabulous to work with, and we couldn't have done this, gotten as far without them, frankly.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate the comments. Thank you.
I just have one question.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
No, of staff, of staff.
Of staff, okay.
Mr. Davis, may you can answer it. These are all great projects, and I support them a hundred percent. My question is, did all the associations that are established now get like a letter or something to say, do you have a project in your neighborhood? Is there something, or was it in their plans that they submitted? Just because we do have some money left that was, you know, budgeted in this great neighborhoods program, do they contact you? Do you contact them? How do they go about getting involved in a program like this?
It's actually both ways. There's a combination of things, and we'll, we'll look at ideas from any source. Staff has ideas, the neighborhood and some of our partners have ideas. These are just in this particular, they're all part of the pipeline, it's just that these are ready to go right now, and there's others in the pipeline. And I think every neighborhood is working on a different type of project at just, just about any time. It really, it's more of a question of timing for all the partners, the permissions that we need to get from, from people, the fundraising that we want for the matching, it all has to come together before you actually see it.
And, and this money has to be designated to recognize and organize neighborhood associations?
Well, it, we, we don't have, not at this point, since we don't have a recognition policy, but we have been working with the organizations that we have recognized up to this point, and that's just been a staff decision.
Council did allocate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the year. This leaves ninety, ninety-five thousand dollars in there. We'll be going through the budget, my guess is, and because of some other things, there will be some other funds available next year. So we expect the flow over time to help neighborhood.
Now, and you mentioned matching funds. Could you get a little more color to that?
Let's see, the specifics, I, I probably have to turn over to Liz, but just about every project, there is some kind of matching funding, and Emmeline Cook comes to mind, that's a hundreds of thousands of dollars a project, and we're only forty thousand dollars of that project cost.
We do have Jim Foxes here from the Oshkosh Area School District. They have committed forty thousand dollars worth of funding to this project, and they are also committed to working the suggestions that were developed through this preferred master plan process into their normal maintenance and redevelopment of the site. So if you would like to talk specifics regarding the Oshkosh Area School District's commitment, Jim is here and would probably like to say a few words. Not to put you on the spot.
No, it, it was, it was just, as I was asking the question, because there are matching funds, I just wanted to get that out there. And, and at previous council meetings, we've heard things from, from public comments that there's nothing good going on in the city and, you know, what's the city doing and all of these things like that. And here's five projects, five groups that are highly involved in the community that are taking some funds that are provided by the city, leveraging them with other government entities as well as other private funding to enhance, beautify, expand, make Oshkosh a better place. So there's a lot of good things that are happening here, and I want those that are out there to, while they may hear some naysayers and some naysaying from time to time, that there is actually a lot of good happening in this community, and these people out here are dedicated to this community as much as the seven people up here, and I think maybe some of you are even, probably maybe a little more dedicated because you're doing this volunteer, and I applaud you for that. Thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward?
Lori Palmieri, two twelve West Parkway Avenue, and I'm here representing Middle Village Neighborhood Association. We're also one of those line items in that. And we'd just like to, well, we've already thanked Lizzie and Ben for all their hard work, but we'd like to definitely echo that because they sure have taken a beating in getting us this far, and they've been wonderful to work with. But yes, so I'm here for any questions regarding the green space or community garden from the neighbor side.
I think upkeep and maintenance is, is going to be addressed by the neighborhood association, correct?
Exactly, it is. And we also already have some other contributors that are donating things like little free libraries and other pieces of equipment. So even though this is showing sixty thousand, the project is actually, I think I estimated somewhere in the ninety thousand dollar range earlier this year. So yes, there are some, many, many hours also being contributed by our neighbors and volunteer and much private digging into the pocket themselves over these last years to get this far.
Any other question? Comments?
I just want to make one. I just want, I want to make a comment, because I've worked with a lot of these associations through Neighborhood Works and from the beginning, but I think it was three or four years ago, Ruth and Rennie, we sat down at the Neighborhood Works, was it three years ago or four, and talked about Emmeline Cook, we talked about the Washington Monument and other things, and your patience is, is, you're recommended for your patience. I mean, this has taken a long time, but I think through Elizabeth and Ben, they've been just, I mean, great champions for you, and, you know, finally, the things you've talked about for how many years are, are, are coming to pass. So, you know, thank you for all of your hard work, I mean, everyone, and Tom is right. It makes this community a far better community. We talk about economic development, these are the things that people look at when they look at a community. It's, it's vibrant, it's alive, things are happening. So thank you, everyone, for all of your hard work.
My name is Kathy Webb. I live at five forty-three Otter Avenue, and I'm part of the leadership team of River East Neighborhood Association. And when you were talking about William Waters Plaza, when Elizabeth had asked us last spring if we would like to help beautify, clean up, and we had a group of people, neighbors, that came together, we had some listening, planning sessions, a lot of wonderful energy, and the day that we ended up planting, there was twelve of us over there. And it's just so exciting to have, this is a major first project for us, but to come together, get to know your neighbors, beautify the area. I'm a hairdresser, so I had talked to a lot of different customers of mine, talking about the William Waters Plaza. They're like, where the heck is that? So when we said now, now they go by and go, wow, yes, it's beautiful. And, and I know when I, you know, there's a group of us that have been asked to help beautify the pots on Main Street too as part of our beautification and deadheading and trying to take the beer bottles and stuff out of the planters on Main Street, and just coming together and meeting people and knowing that this is a fantastic place to live. I think we live in a wonderful neighborhood. I know a lot of people in the past have criticized it, but I don't hear that too much anymore. Now I hear people saying, I really like where I live. I know these families. I know, you know, we've had some picnics and sponsored a couple of the neighborhood night outs, and so I feel, just in a little over a year that we've been a neighborhood association, it's already done what we wanted it to do. And I know I've got some ideas. it to do. And I know I've got some ideas for Riverside Park, and I would love to see some of those big planters that are on Main Street by the historical sign down at Riverside Park. I've, I've been talking to Elizabeth about it and other people. So I'm hoping somewhere along the line that, you know, maybe next year we can come back and say, okay, let's get some of those planters. I love the River Walk. It's just so exciting to be living in Ashkosh today. So thank you for all your help, and we'll just keep doing what we're doing too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward? Okay, feels good. Bring it back to the council. Motion and a second on Resolution 14-407.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. We've had some. So good. Last clerk, take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-407.
Herman?
Aye.
Alison Asby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Towor?
Aye.
Period seven.
Okay, that takes us to council discussion. Direction to city manager and future agenda items, future agenda items. We've got a budget meeting coming up next in September, September 24th at 5:00 PM. Maybe Mr. Roloff would like to ask a couple of questions about that of the council?
Mayor and I were talking, and some of it goes back to gentlemen's earlier comment. The CIP is one of those areas where in the past, the biggest feedback we got at the end of the budget process was that we didn't have enough time for the CIP. The CIP will be ready by the time you have this. And the idea isn't necessarily to review the CIP. It's almost a pre-review of it to say, here's the thought process that went into it. You know, the direction that we've already got from council is that they, in order to meet our 70%, our goal to get our borrowing down to 70%, it's going to be 11.4 million in borrowing this year, as well as the next, really, 10 years. And we're going to show you what, what will be done and what won't be done. It'll, I think what we've heard from councils, they want a little glimpse into what process that we go through to make this difficult decision. We'll be in a position to talk about that. It's not necessarily to get into the guts of it, but to understand how we got to the guts of it. And I think that's what, what I heard council members saying. So you'll have the CIP. The idea is they have it ready in the next week or two. So you will have had the opportunity to review it, but the purpose of the workshop will be to put final approval on it. It's really just to give you that background. And I hope that that reflects what you were looking for. Additionally, if there's any unfinished business before you get the document, the budget document in October, any feedback you can give us, or any other items you'd like discussed at the meeting, we'd be happy to do that. But right now, we're really thinking the big focus is going to be on the CIP.
Comments on it?
Just, just a question. Will we actually get that the night of the 24th, or will it come like in our packet Friday night before?
I think you'll probably get it by the end of next week.
Oh, okay.
Putting a lot of, putting a lot of staff on the spot with that, but that, that's good. That's, you put them on the spot. The idea is that the Plan Commission will be reviewing this for consistency with the comprehensive plan. That's a requirement by state law. The Plan Commission isn't looking at the projects and saying, I like this project, I don't like that project. It's saying, the projects that are in here, are they consistent with our comprehensive plan? Liking and not liking projects, that's the council's role. That's, that's the, that's the policy role for council. So you'll have that by the, what is that going to be, about the 5th? And then you'll have a couple of weeks, but we want to get to the Plan Commission in enough time, so they have time to absorb it, so that when they're discussing it on the 16th, excuse me, when they discuss, discuss it on the 16th, you will have the benefit of their, their review of it, and then you'll have plenty of time even after this to provide comments.
That's nice. We'll have it two and a half weeks beforehand. Awesome. Thank you.
Other direction, city manager, with regard to the budget workshop on the, September 24th at 5:00 PM. Okay, the next thing is the sex offender workshop, which was set up for September 30th at 5:00 PM. That's not before a council meeting. That's a fifth Tuesday. We'll be having that. Comments on that particular workshop?
We'll be discussing with staff issues that we want to bring back based on what we heard at the last meeting. And I haven't had a chance to meet with staff about it yet. I would probably want some information on the next council meeting, just some feedback about what you'd like the tentative agenda to be. That was one of the things we discussed with council, that the more information you can give us about what's your goal and what you're hoping to achieve at the workshop, if you can give us some feedback, we'll put it on the agenda for that time. If you give it some thought, we'd appreciate it.
Okay, so, come up, come up thoughts or direction?
My, my one direction would be, we've had two of these before, and I think we all understand the need that they have to be put somewhere. And our concern has been, you know, why one neighborhood or one section of the city? What can we do, for lack of a better term, to spread the wealth? You know, there are communities that have done things. I don't think we necessarily want to be that restrictive, but I think it, it has to be fair to the community and all residents. If that's the right use of words, fair. But it just can't be a concentration in one area. It, it devalues the neighborhood. I was, I'm in real estate talking with the people in our office. I've asked the question, what happens to the, when you're trying to sell a home that is adjacent to a sex offender home, and they say, you can't sell it, period. There's no discounting in price, they, you can't sell it. So I think we've got to take that into consideration, what it does to the value of our citizens' homes.
Yep, Charles Osby.
Thank you. I think the other thing too, that we have to talk about, is trying to figure out a way that we can somehow get citizen input on how they feel about this as well.
Other comments? Okay, have an opportunity to, thoughts come up over the next couple of weeks to bring those up. We'll, we'll raise it again.
Put it back on again.
We'll put it back on the agenda for next time. Okay, direction on projected levy for 2015 budget. At the last budget meeting, one thing that we had talked about, city manager would like, and we had talked about, was trying to give the city manager some idea of kind of a toleration for a tax increase next year. Also, to get that out, we might end up getting feedback from citizens depending on our thoughts. The idea is to give the city manager some sort of direction to what we might be able to tolerate, which would help him indicate where he might go with the budget. Obviously, where he goes with the budget will be different, if we say 0%, if we say cut it by 5%, or, we got to be a little careful here, because we're not making a decision on what it's going to be. And so he had asked for some input, so I don't know if we want to go down with each person and ask, you know, kind of where, where are your thoughts in terms of what you, you might consider tolerable, is I guess the best way to state it, unless somebody else wants to state it another way. Is that appropriate description of what we just talked about last time?
Tolerable is in, in the eye of the beholder.
No, but we're talking about what the beholder, as the council is going to be. No, I, I recognize that, and that's, that's obviously the, the concern there. So you're, you're right, that's the reason. But ultimately, we're the ones that will be making a decision in terms of what's tolerable and not tolerable in the end, obviously with input from citizens and that, so.
Well, you know, I think that while it's all well and good to say, I'd like to go 3%, I'd like to go 5%, I would like to go 0%. That puts a number out there, and it raises expectations. And if those expectations aren't met, that can create greater issues than we really, it, it can create anxiety and things like that. What I say is, we need to come up with a budget that addresses the service requirements for this community, that addresses what the community is asking us to do. And then it is up to us to determine what it is that we want to fund, how we're going to fund it, what we'll cut, if we're going to cut, why we will not cut a program, even if it means a levy increase. So for me, we need to come forward with a responsible budget that addresses the concerns of the community within our constrained financial situation. So I am not going to put out a number of 1%, 3%, 5% or whatever. It's, it's in whole, and we will make that decision at that point.
Ultimately, we will. Other thoughts, other thoughts?
Well, I, off, off of Mr. Peck's comments, I, I guess I, I concur. You know, I, I wouldn't want our citizens to lock into a number at this point, when we haven't even seen the budget from the city manager of what he projects. You know, as we have our workshops, he's, he's given us information of what the state is going to give us in revenue sharing, and his concerns in certain areas. He talked already about the fire department needing to replace a, a major piece of equipment. So I agree with Mr. Peck. I don't think, you know, until we get into that work, you know, seeing the budget and seeing exactly what Mr. Roloff feels he can present to council, then the tough decisions get made, then. And I'd be, I, I hate to put a number to that. I mean, could I live with a tax increase or a levy increase? Yeah. We, we've done that in, I think, all four years that I've been, four plus years I've been on the council. But at the same time, we've also brought things forward. And people talked about the River Walk, and people talked about other things. So again, it's not so much what we can tolerate, it's what, what are the citizens in Ashkosh? We, you know, we keep raising fees, we keep, you know, plugging holes, but it, sooner or later, we will have to cut some services, and they need to be aware of that. And services will be cut unless they are willing to pay for a bigger tax increase than what the council probably is willing to do. And it's, it's difficult times. We always talk about living within the budget, so I brought up the change orders a little bit. You know, again, budgeting that stuff out there, we're paying for it, and then we got to turn around and come up with more money. And most community, you know, most citizens don't do that in their budget unless it's an emergency. So I, I won't put a number out there specifically either publicly. I mean, Mr. Roloff and I have had some discussions already, but I won't publicly put a number out there at this point.
Mr. Kelly, your thoughts?
My thought is, well, do we know what inflation is going to be? And the number we get out of Washington, I don't believe. I mean, there's Washington DC, then there's Ashkosh, Wisconsin, which is the real world. You know, can we come up with an anticipated inflation number? And then as far as putting a number on it, as Mr. Peck and Mr. Herman have said, I would be reluctant to put a number on it right now. The only thing I would consider, but not today either, is a no greater than. But I think, and as we've said, until we know exactly what's, what's coming down the pike, whichever, I think we're going to have to look at, at cutting some services.
The state's not, the state's not going to give us more money.
That's okay.
I'm just, the state's not going to give us more money unless they're miracles. Your thoughts, Ms. Faskey?
I just think, looking at it, you should always be prepared for, for a zero increase. That's all.
Gerald, any comments you might have on the topic?
I, I agree with the, the rest of the council. I mean, I did come here tonight with a number in mind, but I was a bit reluctant to, to share it simply because I, I would really hate to be locked into that and hate for the rest of the council to be locked into that number. It's, it's only really for, for Mr. Roloff's guidance at this point. And I mean, there's so many other factors that are going to take place over the next two to three months that, that could make that lower, or could possibly make that a, a point or two higher.
Ms. Alison Osby?
I don't think I can say anything different than what my fellow colleagues said as well. I think, if you, I think if you were to ask any council member, at least the last three budget seasons I've been through, I don't think any of us really want to increase the levy. But that doesn't mean we always get what we want. The bottom line is, is, you know, we've had surveys that were done, that Mr. Roloff and I attended. We've certainly got a number of feedback from citizen statements, as well as when we were a part of some of the neighborhoods just not too long ago. So is the reality, in order to keep everything that the citizens want and the city needs, potentially a levy increase, yeah, it's, it's probably pretty much. But I, again, same, same as my peers, although I think it would be a lot easier for staff to do, I think it's, to give them that, it's, I think, still too early in the game.
Okay, overall, and things that are said, ultimately, we have to make a decision. That's going to be understood, although I think we owe Mr. Roloff some kind of a, an area, so people might want to do it privately or whatever. I think it's pretty clear the council's willing to, to tolerate some degree of, of increase. I'll put a number out there. I'd be, have a hard time going over, over 3%. Obviously, at the end, we got to consider what the needs are, but we know that our needs are going to be greater than the dollars available. We, we know that. It's going to have to go up. So those are, those are my thoughts. Ultimately, we have to make the determination at the end. I recognize that, but I think it's helpful. So it sounds to me like people are saying, if, what you see for the needs, and there's some tolerance for some degree of increase, one member has not tolerance for a degree of increase, but I think it's probably going to be limited to some degree. We're probably going to get some comments over the next few weeks about what, what people think. So I think that's good. And ultimately, we'll make the discussion after all of our, we'll make the decision after all of our discussion. So, are you okay there at this point? Are you okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Didn't get everything you might want at this point, but at least you got some ideas out there, Mr. Roloff.
Very good.
Okay, direction to staff on accepting applications for open liquor license. A little bit of background, we've had some discussions of, of liquor licenses. We've gone through those that are going to renew or not renew, as the case may be. I believe at this point in time, there are three open liquor licenses that are out there. There are probably, I think there's a limited number of applications in there. The issue is this, do we want to identify some period of time, say the first of the year after the budget, when we tell people now that we want their applications in, if they got some ideas, get those ideas in, and in January or whatever it might be, that's when we'll actually make the decisions, rather than just sort of taking the list. Is that, do we, a period of time which we tell people, we know we have, we know we have three licenses. We know we don't want to give licenses just to anything. We, we want to make sure those licenses are well-used in terms of the community and the business environment.
I, I think it would be a wonderful way to start out the new year by having proposals for the three open liquor licenses. Basically, what it is, what they plan to do with it, where they would be locating, and we can begin the review process at that point.
So is that reasonable?
Yeah.
Reason of the year, rather than taking it up sooner or taking longer. That way, we're giving people an idea. And I think what I hear Mr. Peck saying, and I've heard other times, is it's just not your line, hey, I want a liquor license so I can have one, because I might want to do something sometime. I think the council's saying, when people come, we want some ideas about what's going to happen with that.
But I also think, Mr. Mayor-
Mr. Herman, then Mr. Cummings.
That we should maybe hold one of those three back and leave that available as an economic development tool or a tool somewhere. We have not had this kind of opportunity in quite some time. I agree that there might be three or four quality projects, but at the same time, as the economy improves and things have been improving, there might be a project in May or June of next year that we would like to have a liquor license, and now we don't have one. So I, I almost think that we should consider those applications, but at the same time, I think we should keep one available. I know that that's been a problem over the years at times, a couple of projects where we didn't have a liquor license available.
There's a lot of bad times.
And it was a really viable project. And so I think this is an opportunity for the council to consider holding one license available for a future project down the line.
I think, I think that's a good idea to keep in mind when we look at those at that particular time, that it might depend on, you know, maybe we'll keep three of them.
Yeah, we might not.
Depending on what the projects are.
And there might be more available. I think there, there's a couple, aren't there a couple gray area ones?
Well, we, we waited until most of those gray areas were addressed. So there are no current gray areas where some might be going, but we waited until the summer because there were some groups here that came before the council, and we, we dealt with those. Others were on the watch list. They were addressed. A lot of them were addressed. But now the city clerk is keeping an eye on those, and we're going to give a 30-day notice if somebody is within 30 days of perhaps being in danger. But as the mayor said, and I thought I heard from a couple others, you're under no obligation to issue your full quota. Just because you can doesn't mean you have to. So you can take a look at quality, whether you want to reserve it for something special, or if you don't think there's anything of quality. Three months will give us adequate time to at least make the public aware. And if there are people who have some projects, but I can tell you, in, in my six years here, I've encountered many situations when we've had them all allocated, and a great project has walked through the door, and I have to tell the person, we don't have anything for you. Sometimes they did some very creative things, sometimes some dangerous things. There is a provision in the statutes that if you have, for example, a restaurant over 300 seats, you can get an exemption. And if we're, we're all allocated, the council can award a license for something with a capacity of over 300 seats. The danger with that is, now you've got a, you run in a restaurant, that you have to fill 300 seats, and that's awfully hard. And I can tell you, there have been businesses in town that have failed. And my belief, and I'm not a restaurant expert, but I'm telling you, I believe that part of the reason they failed- restaurant expert, but I'm telling you, I believe that part of the reason they failed is because they had to fill 300 seats. And that's awfully hard for any, even a good restaurant to be able to do that day in, day out and make ends meet.
Mr. Cummings?
One question. When an applicant applies for the license, is there, is there a timeline on what they're going to be doing? In other words, if I come and say, I'm going to open a bar, do I have to tell you when? Or is it just sort of open-ended?
We've been doing it open-ended here for the most part. And I've always said this, when I, when I was in the town of Grand Chute, the dynamics were much different than they are here. However, I think right now, with what we have right now, we're probably closer to those dynamics. And what I did at that time was, we essentially gave them so many months, and they were, they disclosed to council when they made the presentation, we will be open in X amount of months. And we held them to that. And if they didn't, it wasn't a full year, and you may look at it saying, we're willing to give you three, four months to go. But if you're not back in three, four months, then we essentially start, the next person in line moves up. So, council could also say, we'll give it to you. If you deliver, you'll get the license. If you don't deliver, you go to the back of the line, the next person moves up. You will perhaps even, you can even discuss pre-qualifying people. Year one, year two, year three, and let them move up. And I, as I use the golf analogy, if they're not ready to tee off, you play through, they go to the back of the line, the next one moves up. And you can do that. And you can do however you want to do it. But I think with three months, you're going to have these types of discussions and debates, and I think it's very healthy. I think we'll get stronger projects out of them, and you'll see a better, better impact on the community. Because liquor licenses, you want to be cautious about.
And I think we, we do have to have the timelines, and I think there's been some indication of people hoarding licenses, too. I'm going to do this, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do this. And here later, nothing's been done. And I, I think we've got to stop that practice because, as Mr. Herman said, there might be a really great project coming to town. We don't have a license for them because one has been hoarded. So, I think we've got to really watch them very carefully.
I think the ball is all in our ballpark at this particular point when we do it, so we have some time to think about it. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, there's already one license held out there at the current time for the riverfront. If something comes up on the riverfront, that still exists, does it not?
Right on the riverfront in Marion Road.
If there's any economic development on the riverfront, there's a license that's separate from these three, that the council, the past council, people weren't on it. So, that is actually, exists out there at this time as, as an open license. Kept with the same idea Mr. Herman was, that there might be something on, on the riverfront.
But right now, that is restricted to the riverfront area of the Marion Road area.
So, if Boatworks area, you got something going, can't cross the river?
Technically, I mean, the council could, could do that at any time.
Council could change it at any time.
But I think your idea about having an open-ended one for something special, I think there's value for you having that discussion.
We have, any other comments people would like to make on liquor licenses? Okay, so we're looking at telling people after the first of the year, we'll, we'll look at proposals at that particular point in time, and we'll look for concrete proposals, not too, too far open-ended. So, our good friend from the, in the rear of the room, might, might want to get that information out there. Hey, Jeff, let people know.
He's ignoring you. He's busy typing.
We'll try and do the same. So, we'll, we'll let him do that work for us. I'm sure he'll do a good job on that one. Okay, citizen statements to the council. Another opportunity for people to come forward and make a comment about something that may be going on worthwhile in the community or a concern that they may have, a few things. Give us your name, address. Limit your comments to five minutes. Direct to council, no election hearing, and nothing on the agenda. Business agenda for tonight.
My name is Patricia Giner. I live at 1316 Broad. I'm coming this evening in regard to the new recycle center being moved. I just heard from one of the gentlemen that works out there. I don't know for sure if it's right on what's going to happen, but I don't think it's going to work the way it is already. You're going to go in one small area, turn around, go dump, then there's another one, X-ing. I've used the recycle center a lot over there. And even the, the problems they have over there now, with people, they're impatient, they gun their motor, they squeal their tires. These guys are trying to get numbers down. I seen a gentleman about two weeks ago. One of your workers was almost killed by someone backing up, not even paying attention in a big hurry. And I heard maybe you guys are going to go to cards. Are you guys going to cards? Are you just going to go with the stickers? I just hope it's big enough where people can get in and do what they have to do, because I know it's a good idea what you guys do, recycle. I like it. I take things over, I bring things home, recycle. And I mentioned a few, maybe a year, year and a half now, where I live. I would like Tennessee, Custard, Monroe, and Broad in the work area for new sidewalks repair. There's heating. You know, you want the streets nice, you want sidewalks nice. People with a handicap, wheelchairs, walking. We'd like to have that taken care of. If, if it's only our family, it means a lot to us. And what else was it? I know the city's been cutting the grass on the railroad property. Appreciate what you've done. There are other people that are still cutting it, but the officer said, why is the city letting it go more than 12 to 14 inches long? Well, I understand that we have summer help. They do a tremendous job. I will never, ever touch that grass, not after what I went through. I was trying to do a good deed, but in the long run, it's the liability. That's what the railroad told me, and I understand it. But if one can do it, then we all should do it. I know there's probably some friction between the police department and the city, the way I look, because they thought I was angry about it. I'm not angry about it. People want to do good things in the city and help. And, you know, a lot of the neighbors down at the other ends want their property to look nice, across the river property. They have nice homes. So do we. But the officers mentioned, well, why, why are they letting it grow so long? Well, I don't know the answer, but I appreciate what the city has done cutting the grass.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward at this point?
Kyle Clark, 1836 Ohio Street. This is a great time to look at the community and say, we have great things going. But let's also not forget the, your time investment in the community. So, don't sell yourselves short. I thank you for your service as well. And in your encouragement to get others to do good in our community, you've, we're seeing tangible results of the city's investment in our community. As part of that, in the community involvement, I wanted to touch on the role of social media and how this is changing our communities and how we interact with each other. And you've seen the success of some social media movements, particularly the ALS Ice Bucket Challenge, among others. And so, I encourage us as a city to continue to understand the role of social media. And I'm also here to remind you that the seven of you up there on the dais have been challenged to the ALS Ice Bucket Challenge. So, those of you that have participated already, I thank you. Mr. Peck, you, it was a very creative use of a Zamboni.
Do you want to put it up on the screen?
I don't have, my phone is actually off all the way.
I got it.
But I wanted to also let you guys know that I have contacted OCMS, the Oshkosh Media Services. So, they're more than happy to help you with your filming as needed. But the most important part about this is the fundraising. And as we've seen, when you leverage community assets, that's the most important part. So, I wanted to thank you for that opportunity. And Mr. Roloff, you were also challenged in that message as well. So-
I don't do Facebook, but I heard from, from my kids that I was challenged. So, thank-
So, you, I just wanted to encourage you to use the role of social media in our reaching out to the community as well. I wanted to thank you for your service in this community. And your real challenges of the budget, they don't go unnoticed in the community. People are asking, what's going on? Why are we spending this? And when you talk to them, they realize that the city is investing in its future. So, there's some tough decisions in the short term that have our long-term financial future in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Just in response, as he mentioned, I'm a firm believer in go big or go home. So, being a hockey player, I took advantage of a Zamboni last night and had a Zamboni full of ice and, of snow shavings and water dumped over me. So, you guys got some real creativity to think about.
I understand there's a buy on age.
Good luck.
All right, all right.
Remember, the role is to raise awareness and fundraising to help find a cure. So, there's no buy on the ability to write a check.
Okay, thank you.
I did make my donation.
Thanks for the comments. Anybody else care to come forward at this particular point in time? If no one come forward, I'll go to the city manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We put a place marker for GoEDC update. Some of you may have read some media accounts that have been going on, the paper covered it a while back. And so, now some of the news stations are picking it up. Just to clarify, the recruitment for an executive director, the goal was to have the person onboard by January 1. Obviously, that's going to be subject to fundraising. We're putting monies in the budget in anticipation of the city's contribution. But that's going to have to be matched a great deal by private funding as well. And that's, that's the process that really needs to take place. So, that's what the GoEDC board is looking at right now. And, and then we'll, parallel to that, start the recruitment process. But we've got to have money to hire the person. But we will be doing the recruitment with the hopeful announcement of a, a person sometime in November for starting sometime after the first of the year. But again, it's all subject to funding. So, that's pretty much the, the crux of the update now, and happy to answer any questions you might have about that one. And then, just in the agenda packet, there was an agreement with Neighborhoods Badger Land, Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative for $20,000. I'm reporting that to council as, as, as part of our purchasing policy. It's under the threshold for approval by council, but it does require me to notify you. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Questions on either one? Ms. Kelly Purse and Ms. Allison Osby, after that.
Mr. Roloff, just a question that I have. It's something I've wondered, and I've actually been approached by some citizens about it. But, but GoEDC board meetings and committee meetings, from what I understand, don't have, aren't posted for, for open meetings? Is, do you, do you know why they're not, or what, what the rationale is for those not being posted for, for public attendance?
We, we believe we're not, they're not required to do that. However, I think right now, the only reason that we're not doing is mostly it's, it's organizational types of things. A lot of personnel matters. I believe the goal is to eventually have some transparency with it. But for right now, we're really just getting our, our sea legs on it. So, we haven't had any meetings open to the public, but quite frankly, they've been pretty dull and quiet for now. But the idea is that we will eventually be inviting the media to, to attend meetings. And obviously, the public could, if they wanted to. If we're open up to media, we're essentially opening up to everybody anyway, but not at this time.
Allison Osby?
For the GoEDC, has there been a hiring committee that's been put together then? That's, or has been assembled?
It's being recruited right now. There is a board development committee that's responsible for making a recommendation to the full board on the members of the hiring committee. That hasn't been done yet. The committee's doing their work, but they haven't made any recommendation to the board. And that's going to be, I, the next board meeting, I believe, that'll take place. But they're still recruiting for that. They, they don't have a full contingent for the hiring committee at this time.
All right. Questions, comments on either of the items? Okay, seeing none. Look for a motion to go into closed session. I'll ask the deputy mayor, Ms. Allison Osby.
Thank you. Motion to go into closed session. The common council for the city of Oshkosh may convene into closed session pursuant to Section 19.851G of the Wisconsin statutes to confer with legal counsel who will give legal advice concerning strategy to be adopted in regard to litigation in which the city is involved pertaining to claims for unpaid fees related to extraordinary expenses incurred during the Oshkosh Pub Crawl. Joseph E. Kubiak.
Second?
Second.
Anybody like to make a comment on that, whether or not the council should go into closed session for this? Seeing no one come forward, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk, take a roll call vote on the motion to go into closed session.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Hanske?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Towor?
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
Okay, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. We're adjourned.